Reconvene special session.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Is there one more aye out there? Okay, it's unanimous. Oh, who's that that just came on?
Ryan Macias.
Okay, all right. So we're out of the executive session. So item number one is a discussion approval disapproval to waive the attorney-client privilege concerning the election department operational and technical assessment prepared by outside counsel examining the allegations made by Kevin Kavanaugh surrounding the 2024 primary election and present the findings to the board and direct the clerk of the board to place the results of the report on the county's website with any necessary redactions that may need be required. So, um, is there, do I need to explain that anymore than what we just read? Supervisor Sertie, Supervisor Miller?
I'm good.
So, so Mr. Chair-
I'm good too.
Okay.
So, Mr. Chair, I move that we, um, moved, I move that we waive attorney-client privilege for the purpose of being able to give information on this redacted report.
Okay. Do I have a second on that motion?
Second.
Okay, all in favor say aye.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Aye.
We need to do a roll call?
Well, a roll call would be good too, but also your version of that report would not instruct the clerk's office to put a copy of that on the webpage with the redactions. You just had to discuss that. So you may want to amend that motion to more mirror what is on the agenda.
Read the words in front of me.
I'll leave that up to you.
Thank you, sir. So, Mr. Chair, I make an amended motion to waive the attorney-client privilege concerning the election department operational and technical assessment prepared by outside counsel examining the allegations made by Kevin Kavanaugh surrounding the 2024 primary election and present the findings to the board and direct the clerk of the board to place the results of the report on the county's website with any additional redactions that may be required.
So do I have a second on that amended motion?
Second.
All right, all, oh, we're gonna do roll call.
Supervisor Miller?
Aye.
Supervisor Sertie?
Aye.
Vice Chairman McClure?
Aye.
Chairman Goodman?
Aye.
That motion passes, unanimous.
Okay. All right, we've got, uh, Mr. Brett Johnson, our outside counsel, is the beginning individual to start us off. Thank you for being here.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and again, my name is Brett Johnson, Law Firm of Snell and Wilmer. Today with me are my colleagues Joseph Kainfield and Ian Joyce. On the phone, I'm hoping we can confirm that Sean Trendy and Ryan Macias, two of our experts that I'll introduce later, are on the call. Natasha?
Yes, we can confirm. For those that are attending on the call, can you re-announce your name and then also the firm in which you represent?
This is Ryan Macias, and I'm one of the experts with Snell and Wilmer.
Any other attendees on the, sorry?
This is Sean Trendy, and I'm one of the experts with Snell and Wilmer as well.
Thank you. All attendees has been confirmed.
Perfect, and thank you. In addition, Michael Walker, one of our other experts who I'll introduce later, is not able to join telephonically, but he is available for messaging if we have questions as part of this evaluation review. On August 21st, 2024, this board asked Snell and Wilmer to evaluate Supervisor Kavanaugh's, quote, "report of obvious errors" in the 2024 primary election. Initially, we would like to thank the county staff, the recorder, the election staff, the Secretary of State, and Pinellas County Republican Democratic Parties for their help during this process. It was invaluable. Supervisor Kavanaugh's report makes three broad claims about the July 2024 primary election. First is that the distribution between in-person and early voting totals in Pinellas County was, quote-unquote, "abnormal." Second, that a person manipulated the final vote tallies. And third, that the vote totals were released to the public before polls closed on Election Day. As part of our review, to review the claims, we requested a substantial documentation from the county recorder's office related to the election machines, chain of custody procedures, logic and accuracy testings, trainings, the results of the July 2024 primary election, as well as other procedures and practices that the recorder's office follows. We also did personal interviews on several occasions with Recorder Lewis and the election staff. We retained three experts with experience with election fraud and election machines testing. As mentioned, we have Professor Sean Trendy, who's a statistical, who did the statistical analysis related to the first allegation, Ryan Macias, who did a chain of custody and security analysis, and Michael Walker with Pro V&amp;V, who did a technical assessment of the machines. I will give you more of their credentials later on. We also conducted an onsite visit on September 11th and 12th of 2024, where Mr. Macias also interviewed election staff on chain of custody and other procedures, and Pro V&amp;V digitally imaged the hard drives of the servers, tabulators, and toolbox laptops that make up the election, um, management system. Our goal was not just to review the allegations, but instead review all election administration security efforts because of the need for a totality of the circumstances analysis to address the three narrow claims that were actually presented. Cutting to the chase, the results, there were no evidence of any kind to substantiate any of the three claims. The relevant background is this. Before discussing the three claims presented, the important, it is important to orient by discussing some of the preliminary facts. Pinellas County owns and operates several different election machines that are relevant. There's the EMS server and what we call the client device, which is the brains, the toolbox laptops, the tabulators, and several USB thumb drives and other removable media. The EMS server and client device the county uses called, um, that's also the election system software, is EVS 6.3-00 voting system. This operates on some traditional technology on Dell Power Edge T43 EMS servers as well as the 550 EMS workstation. These machines were certified by the Secretary of State. The server is responsible for counting the votes and reporting the results, among other things. The client device is the laptop interface for those servers. The county has two voting systems, one in the tabulation room and another in confidential location for backup purposes. The toolbox laptops are used to streamline the process necessary for the elections, like creating certain test decks for the LNA testing, the logic and accuracy tests, making the Spanish audio translations, preparing those USB flash drives to be used in the election machines, etc. Those laptops are not used on the tabulators and have no connection with the tabulating process. They are also not connected to the internet. I repeat, they're not connected to the internet. The county has two laptops. One is used during the election to generate, again, the Spanish language translations for ADA accessible voting machines and to also generate test results for the logic and accuracy testings. The other laptop has never been opened. It is still in its original packaging with tamper-evident seal in a cage in the voting center. The tabulators the county owns, there are two models. One is the DS 950, there are four of those, and there's a DS 850, there's one of those. Only the 950s were used during the primary election. The 850 remained in the vault to be used in the general election due to the higher capacity and the voter expectations during that period of time. So again, 850 was never used. The county tabulators underwent routine maintenance and had been serviced for minor issues throughout 2024. We document in those reports, and they have no impact on the claims raised. The different USB thumb drives and other removable media, they were used to transport data from the tabulators to the EMS server and then to the server to the gateway laptops for uploading of the results. They also served important functions in regard to the election machines that allowed the, and allowed the county to have the machines be able to talk to each other. This is a common practice, not only throughout Arizona, but the country, as verified by our experts. In regard to security, the county has spent significant resources on its voting center. There is a brand-new center dedicated to voting here in Pinellas County. That is where the tabulator and the EMS server are kept. It can only be, the room can only be entered with the two key cards from individuals of different political parties. It is under 24/7 surveillance. The footage is retained for 30 days, and the devices with internet connectivity are not allowed in that room. So everybody has to leave their phones outside, okay? The voting system, there are various physical securities on the voting system. There's a cage around the EMS servers. There are port blockers to prevent unauthorized USB plugins. The tabulation machines and scanners are sealed using wire tamper-evident serialized seals. The entire voting system is on a closed loop. This means that the components are connected to each other through color-coded cables visible to the public on those video, and they are not connected to the internet. The EMS server has several other security precautions, including a multi-factor authentication that is in the unredacted version that you, if you care to read that portion of it. It is not for security reasons in the redacted portion. The election machines, and I'll say that in a global way, went through significant testing before and after the primary election. Most significantly is the logic and accuracy testing that is done by the Secretary of State to cover the statewide races and the county recorder to do the county races. In addition to that, your vendor would also come in and do, ensure that the software is handling correctly and the machines are acting correctly before the LNA tests. The purpose is to confirm that the tabulation machines are accurate. This is done by generating a script with hypothetical election results, creating test ballots, reflecting the script, running the test ballots through the tabulators, and confirming that the vote totals in the tabulator are identical to the vote totals that are on the script. The process also involves zero testing. This confirms the vote total is zero before and after the logic and accuracy tests to ensure that there is no flow-on to when the actual election is occurring. The county conducted pre and post-election logic and accuracy testing for the July 2024 primary election, and based off of our experts' review and from the Secretary of State's office, it was 100% accurate. The Secretary of State also, again, connected their own testing for the election, again, 100% accurate. The post-election hand count also occurred per statute. The county is required to conduct a hand-count audit of early and in-person votes after the election. It's a sampling, 100% accuracy for early and in-person voting for the primary election. So, as part of our technical review, we retained three experienced and qualified election experts. The first is Dr. Sean Trendy, who is a PhD and is a specialist in political trends, voting patterns, demographic trends, and statistical methodologies. He, uh, he was asked to evaluate Supervisor Kavanaugh's statistical analysis of in-person and early voting ratios. Dr. Trendy is a recognized expert about statistics in the United States. He has testified on multiple occasions in courts, in both federal and state court here in the state of Arizona. He has also been appointed by other Supreme Courts as a special master to develop reports and develop methodologies that were accepted by both political parties in those states. R&amp;M Election Solutions, run by Ryan Macias, he is an expert in election technology and security and administration. Prior to going out on his own, he was with the state of California and handling election administration and security issues for the state of California. In addition, he serves as an advisor to multiple government agencies as to election security and administration. There's also Pro V&amp;V, headed by Michael Walker. He specializes in testing election machines and equipment. He is one of two federally authorized laboratories in the United States. He took part in prior technical reviews in Arizona, including the 2021 Maricopa County Audit of Dominion Voting Systems, 5.5B voting system. He was asked to evaluate the county election machines to confirm no data manipulation, quote-unquote. On September 11th and 12th, as I mentioned, was an onsite visit. As part of that review, the parties agreed that Mr. Macias and Pro V&amp;V should conduct that onsite visit in person at Your Votes Center. This was specifically coordinated with the county recorder and the Secretary of State to ensure that the election machines remain certified. So let me be clear, those election machines, although gone, who went under audit on September 11th and 12th, they have retained their certification by the Secretary of State. But political party representatives were also in attendance, and again, appreciate not only their attendance, but their cooperation in this process. Following all the chain of custody procedures, Pro V&amp;V performed a bit-by-bit cloning of the hard drives for the EMS servers, the tabulation machines, the tabulator workstations, and the toolbox laptops. They also performed what's called a hashtag validation on the tabulating machines. Mr. Macias concurrently interviewed election staff regarding administrative procedures, the chain of custody process and the handling of different ballots, as well as the results and other matters. Mr. Macias has also requested substantial documentation above and beyond what we requested to confirm that chain of custody procedures have been followed for the 2024 primary election. Of note, though, there is one edit in, um, in the report on the Snell and Wilmer report, not the report of the experts, on page 15. It makes reference to a breach of a seal. In reality, it was a break that has a connotation, I guess, in the software world. So just to make sure it's clear, on page 15, where the word is breach, it was meant to be break of the seal. So now the responses to Supervisor Kavanaugh's claims. His first claim is, quote-unquote, "abnormal voting distributions." Dr. Trendy was responsible for analyzing that data. As part of that, he determined with uncertain, no uncertainty, that there was no validity to Supervisor's concerns. Dr. Trendy conducted his own independent analysis of the July 2024 primary returns and found that they followed a typical distribution pattern according to statistical methodologies. Dr. Trendy also found that there were multiple errors in Supervisor Kavanaugh's report. These are basic errors. There was Excel typos, copy-pasting some formulas into incorrect boxes leading to incorrect vote totals. There were basic math errors. The early vote percentages is an example of attributed to each candidate that did not equal 100%. There was also, it lacked full data. It did not, for example, it did not include the final drop totals. Dr. Trendy identified other errors in his report, but even those do not contain all of the errors that exist in Supervisor Kavanaugh's report in regard to data. Supervisor Kavanaugh in his report, according to Dr. Trendy, has a misunderstanding of, quote-unquote, "normal," capital N, "distribution." The common argument in Supervisor Kavanaugh's report is that all bell curves is, quote-unquote, "small n," "normal," and that non-bell curves are, quote-unquote, "abnormal." On this basis, he states that normal in-person early vote difference ratios start low, go high, and then decrease over time. The problem is, under statistical methodology, "normal" with a capital M is a term of art referring to a bell curve. It is not meant to be "normal" as if you're in a conversation saying that is a normal behavior. "Normal" has a different terminology for statistics. There are many other types of curves showing a random distribution. Dr. Trendy in his report discusses a dice roll, for example, that has a uniform distribution. And then there's also a flipping coin example, but these are only, that only have one of two possible results. Many of these distribution types are, quote-unquote, "skewed." Basically, it's hard to basically follow them just based off of methodology alone. These results actually, but the results here actually do follow a normal distribution when the correct data is applied. So when Dr. Trendy actually applied all of the correct data, the normal, capital N, curve actually did occur. So even though he was applying the wrong analysis, when that actually was corrected, the normal curve did occur, according to Dr. Trendy. The reason why Doctor Supervisor Kavanaugh's graphs do not follow bell curves, again, is because he used absolute values instead of true values. And, for example, he plotted, he plotted a negative six difference as six differences. Supervisor Kavanaugh simply lacked the sufficient data because the election results are clustered in a single year cannot determine which election distribution is abnormal and which is normal. This is detailed specifically in the report because, obviously, each election has its own characteristics. And as I detailed in the report, for example, one of the candidates in the 2020 election encouraged voters not to vote by mail. In this election, the same political party is now encouraging people to vote by mail. So which one is abnormal? The one in 2024 or the one in 2022? From a statistical standpoint, you have to understand that you can't just pick which one you think is normal and then which one is abnormal. It takes a lot more data. So in that regard, on the statistical analysis, it was completely unsupported. The second claim is in regard to data manipulation. Our findings is very clear. There's absolutely no evidence that, that there was any manipulation of the data. Mr. Macias, did his site visit confirm that only one toolbox laptop was used during the primary election? Supervisor Kavanaugh claimed that the county's toolbox laptop was equipped with software from ESNS to run the tabulators. However, Pro V&amp;V determined that the toolbox laptops were not equipped with software from ESNS to run the tabulators. Mr. Macias also determined that toolbox laptops were not used in tabulating, in the tabulating process. Mr. Macias and Pro V&amp;V also determined that the laptop was only equipped with software to generate Spanish language translations and to generate test results for the LNA testing. Another claim was that the toolbox computers were, quote-unquote, "wifi-enabled." The findings were that all laptops were wifi-enabled, but the question is instead whether they were actually connected to the internet. Pro V&amp;V found no evidence that the toolbox laptops had been connected to the wifi. Those would have been generated based off of different logs. The county staff confirmed that the laptop is on airplane mode at all times. Another claim was that persons could have placed a USB inside the laptop and then used the information to, quote-unquote, "obtain voter data." The findings are that there was no evidence of a USB stick inserted into a toolbox laptop. The only USB activity that Pro V&amp;V detected was the results of the election that were run into certain USBs on August 1st and August 3rd. This is consistent with county practice, procedures, and best practice of using one-way USB sticks to upload election results. Again, there was no evidence that data on tabulators or EMS servers were manipulated. Pro V&amp;V confirmed that the July 2024 primary election software was not loaded onto the DS 850 machine. But as a precaution, even though it was sitting there in a vault by itself, we still imaged it, and we still reviewed it to ensure that there was nothing wrong with it. There was no evidence at all to support that data was manipulated on the DS 950, the 850 that wasn't even used, or the EMS servers. Pro V&amp;V determined there were no abnormal entries into the tabulating system. There was no evidence that incorrect data had been downloaded into the EMS servers, and there was no evidence the machines were ever connected to the internet. Supervisor Kavanaugh's remaining evidence of data manipulation is either taken out of context or simply unreliable. Some of the allegations included the Secretary of State allegedly stating that Pinellas County stating on a radio station that Pinellas County had, quote, "some infrastructure issues during the primary." We contacted the Secretary of State, and through his policy director, she stated that he was referencing a gas leak nearing a polling site which had nothing to do with the Vote Center building or polling locations. Supervisor Kavanaugh also claimed of a, quote-unquote, whistleblower who warned of a lack of security for ballots. There was absolutely no evidence showing that this person exists. Regardless, Mr. Macias's reports determine that the county's election processes and security are at above industry best practices, and for our purposes, Snell and Wilmer compliant with Arizona law. There is absolutely no evidence, directly or indirectly, to suggest these practices were somehow not followed during the 2024 July primary election. Supervisor Kavanaugh also claimed that the depth of advertising for the candidates did not correlate to the votes in certain districts. Now, that's a hard one. Unable to evaluate this claim because we do not have access to that advertising data. But there are several facial issues in regard to that allegation that makes it unreliable. The determination was based on Supervisor Kavanaugh's subjective view that the depth of advertising seemed to correlate rather than some empirical study. In addition, the sample size is extremely small, only one single district. Supervisor Kavanaugh also concedes that some of the advertising actually did correlate. It appears that Supervisor Kavanaugh did not consider other variables that might impact the advertising-to-vote ratio, like the quality of advertising, individuals running on slates, or demographic changes. He also, Supervisor Kavanaugh also did not disclose the underlying analysis metrics. So other statistical analysis in this report related to that claim is just simply unreliable. Can't verify it, but it's unreliable. Claim three was the premature release of votes. Mr. Macias evaluated the audit logs from the various voting devices that I've already cataloged. Mr. Macias determined that the county deactivated, that the county's deactivated ability to report results on July 5th and did not reactivate that function until 1 minute and 10 seconds after polls closed on July 30th, 2024. The evidence that Supervisor Kavanaugh points to appears to have been from an individual by the name of Boots Hawk, who sent an email, and, and there are several issues with this email. First of all, it only shows the total of number of people that have voted, not actually counted. This is common for political parties to use vote turnout numbers to convince supporters to get to the polls while the polls are still open. Simply, the Republicans only have 30%, and the Democrats have 50%. Look at this, you need to get to the polls to vote. It's that, that simple of an advertising mold. It's not based off of statistical data. In many cases, though, it is sometimes based off of political parties who have observers in the polling locations or outside the tabulation center to see as votes are coming in. So it's not abnormal for that data to get out there, but, but in this context, it's not supported. Based on our review in conjunction with our retained, recognized experts, it is our opinion that Supervisor Kavanaugh's claims and inferences related to the 2024 primary election have absolutely no merit. There was absolutely no manipulation of the 2024 primary election results. There was no evidence of wrongdoing by any county official or other third party. In fact, the opposite is what we found. The security that the county has put in place and the significant resources dedicated to the election administration security meet Arizona law standards and are equal to or exceed best practices. Based on our experience and that of our outside experts, we have complete faith in the capabilities of Recorder Lewis and the rest of the election administration team. As such, based on the issues we reviewed, we express confidence to the citizens of Pinellas County that their vote is secure and the results of the 2024 primary election are accurate. We're happy to take any questions.
Okay. Do you, do you have some, Supervisor McClure?
Probably in a second.
Okay, Supervisor Sertie?
No, that's pretty open and shut, as far as I'm concerned.
Okay, Supervisor Miller?
Yeah, I'm good. It's, uh, very detailed and, uh, job well done. Thank you.
So, I do, so basically you're saying that even if you'd use the right numbers, you'd still be wrong because you used the formulas incorrectly?
Yes, sir.
That's straight up, okay.
And-
That's a play away.
That's the nice way to say it. I'm trying to be nice.
And here's the data to support it.
And that's, and that's the data.
Okay, okay.
No, I'm very impressed with your investigation.
Thanks, sir.
Well, and I, and I appreciate the fact that, you know, we've got a candidate that's tried to create doubt in our system and everything else of that nature. And I appreciate Supervisor McClure asking that this be analyzed and looked at by outside counsel and your experts, and, and the extensiveness that you put into this. I, I feel will help bring back that confidence that has been basically doubted or put out there for the public to doubt. And so, you know, in this time, in this day and age, it's important and imperative that we do everything in our power to make sure that we bring back the confidence of our system and what we're doing. We're not perfect, but it's better than anything that's out there. And so I appreciate the analysis and everything that you've taken. And I've always had complete confidence in Dana, in what she's done. And I, there's four of us that have been on this board that have been completely trustworthy of, we feel that trust that she has from us. I just want to reiterate that. Does anybody else want to make any comments?
Quick comment. So, when we get down, because I- So, when we get down, because I know, we'll come back to whoever...
I'll come back to you, Supervisor Miller.
I've heard in the background that Supervisor Kavanaugh says, oh, you know, the tabulators you find, it's the USB sticks that were bad. And so, a slight explanation into the USB sticks for the public to understand how that works, because, you know, apparently they had information on them, as you say, you know, they didn't, but that somehow this random USB stick from the manufacturer had some information, you know, bad information on it, and it's suddenly how it made it in. We randomly picked these USB sticks, but you know, suddenly, you know, 100 of them, and oh my gosh, they made all these sticks, and they put it on those sticks. So I'd like a little explanation of the USB sticks, and to understand, too, that even if we erased that information from the computer, that it's still in the history.
Yeah, that's what I think the public would...
That it shows that it came from this, from the server over to the other side, and that there's nothing on there. Could that be explained a little bit, just to put people's minds at rest?
That could be detected.
Absolutely. Chairman, if you don't mind?
You bet.
I'm gonna turn it over to Ryan Macias, who's on the phone. And Ryan, are you there? It's like phone a friend. Ryan, are you there?
For $1,000.
Yes, I am.
All right. Ryan, did you understand the question?
I think I do. If my understanding is correct, you were just asking if there would be detection mechanisms in place if a nefarious USB would be plugged into any of the devices. Is that correct?
That is true, and that the USB stick that was used to transfer the data was clean to begin with, you know, that there wasn't something on it nefariously put on there by who knows who before it was even put in the packaging. Mission Impossible stuff.
And I think, Ryan, I'm...
Based on...
Yeah.
Go ahead.
No, Ryan, I think you're gonna have to go, it's not the sticks, it's the actual machines that you're gonna have to give a little context for, because the machines are gonna know all the information from the stick that comes up, and even if you, even if you put something, a stick, and you put it in your pocket and you walked out, you can't change it from the machine. But Ryan, maybe get a little bit better context on that.
Yeah, so there's, there's a few things on that. First and foremost is the USBs that are utilized by the county, per the county, and their standard operating procedures, as well as all of the evidence that we obtained and reviewed, show that they do what is called formatting the device, the USB. That is actually one of the things that the toolbox can do, which basically erases everything off of that USB stick. So it is clean before it goes into any part of the voting system. Secondarily is if it had something on the device that was then what we call written, excuse me, on the USB, that was then written to the voting system, that would be captured in the logs, stating that the USB is placing something on the voting system. So, in essence, what we were able to, what Pro V&amp;V was able to determine through their analysis was every time the USB stick was inserted, per the requirements of the county or per its standard operating procedures, there was never anything written to the voting system. Rather, it received data from the voting system and then was transferred over to an external device, which is what they call the gateway computer, which is basically the computer that's used to place the results on the Internet publicly, on the website. But that was a one-way communication from the voting system to the USB, and then from the USB to a completely separate computer to display results.
And so, Mr. Macias, in that process...
Does that answer the question?
Yes, it does. And in that process, though, the USB stick, as most of us know, when you put it in your machine, it has an identifier when you put it up. It says, oh, here's the stick, XYZ 67, you know, whatever the number is on there. And so, the history of the toolbox to the gateway would show that that same number was uploaded and then down, or, you know, downloaded and uploaded. It would show that same stick and that not some other stick was used. Even if you tried to erase it, it would still be in the log. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's how we, that's how Pro V&amp;V was able to determine that everything was a one-way communication, is because they were able to track, you know, a device that was plugged into the voting system, into the voting system, to retrieve data and then to export the data to the gateway.
Thank you.
Okay. And to simply answer your question, Supervisor, correct.
Thank you.
Supervisor 30, or Miller, did you have a question?
Well, I don't have a question necessarily, but I have a statement, because I think machine has outdone man all of a sudden. I mean, and truly, you could not be this accurate through a hand count, manual count. I mean, this is, this is technology at its best. And there's just no way you could be this accurate in a manual environment. And I just, I think that's, that's the future right there, and that's, I hope that is what brings back the confidence of the electorate, because this is fascinating in some ways to see how, how you can just dig into the middle of this stuff and really analyze, you know, which way the data travels through those sticks and when. It's fascinating to me in so many ways. So I hope, I hope this is the turning point, maybe, for society to understand that technology is not a bad thing.
Thank you, Supervisor. Thank you. Supervisor 30?
I have no questions. I'm thoroughly convinced District 5 is ready to get back to business. We have serious issues to deal with.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
Supervisor, I mean, okay.
No, I have, I have not deleted, sir.
Okay.
I just wanted to point out, maybe if we could ask Mr. Johnson, because the action item requires the clerk of the board to make that report available with any necessary redactions, and not having seen the report, are there redactions that have been made? And if we could at least, maybe for the public, clarify, you know, why those redactions might have been made? I mean, I know legally there are certain abilities, state's best interest, et cetera, you know, confidential information, you know, social security numbers, yada, yada, that you would normally redact that type of information when requested. But in this, generically, if you could possibly clarify what might have been redacted, so that the public is aware, when they do get a copy of this report, because I'm sure we will get requests for it shortly, that then I don't have to go ahead and make those explanations.
Okay. Could you do that?
I could do that, absolutely. Every, every, no problem, Mr. Keller. I'm gonna lump them together, but every single redaction that was made was not for privileged reasons or for other reasons. It was purely based off of the security of the election coming up in the general election. If the information that was included, of the unredacted version, were to get out, it could compromise the system, because they are looking at the root data. So, one of Pro PMV's, it's called a technical report, is, don't get me wrong, I wouldn't understand it, but basically, somebody who has nefarious reasons could look at Pro V&amp;V's report and use that for nefarious reasons against Pinal County, and we would obviously not want that. That goes for many of the other items that were redacted, purely security precautions to ensure the integrity of the election, that we just do not share as a matter of public policy and in the best interest of the state.
Okay. That's a good explanation. Okay. All right. I think we've, I think we've covered it all, so I can adjourn this thing, can't I?
Chairman, if I can just make one announcement?
Yes, please.
That is that the actual report will be available on the actual agenda item, probably around 6:00 PM tonight. I will make those attachments within the next hour.
Okay, so for any individuals that are interested in reading through the report and analyzing it, it'll be at their, minus the redacted portion of it?
Yes.
Cool.
Mr. Keller to the effort.
Yes. Supervisor 30?
So since that's gonna be published online, we could surely save staff's manpower. No more need for public records requests on this item.
Is that correct? I'm gonna ask you, as our counsel, can we do that?
Mr. Chairman, Supervisor, that was part of my goal by asking that this be included, any final report be included with the clerk's webpage, so that individuals would not necessarily have to request a public records request to get a copy of it. They could just download it that way. That won't stop everybody asking for a public records, but hopefully, it will facilitate some of the requests much more easy.
Okay. Does that answer your question? I agree with Supervisor 30.
Yes, it does.
Okay. Wouldn't it be easy? I mean, do, anyway, I get it, I get it. And I, we spend a lot of time of our staff, and a lot of money has been spent in a lot of areas over the last several years for stuff like this that is just, I'm sorry, quite honestly ridiculous. So, with that being said, we're gonna adjourn this meeting.
Congratulations, Elections Department.
Good Brett.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone.